Good evening and welcome to the May 26th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in attendance with us tonight, and we're also glad to have those of you that are watching from home on TV. Tonight, we will have our pledge of allegiance to be led by principals from the Murfreesboro City School System, followed then by a moment of silence in which we will certainly remember our director, Dr. Linda Gilbert, after which the principals will place a rose in honor of Dr. Gilbert tonight. And now, our pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, our moment of silence. Can we have one spokesperson from the principals group to explain everything that what you're doing tonight?
Our white roses represent one from each school, just in memory of Dr. Gilbert and just everything that she instilled in us as leaders, everything she taught us for our community and for our schools. She is a champion that we are going to miss, and those roses are just a keepsake of memory for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. I will remind board members or anyone who is speaking, if you will just pull your masks down so we can better understand. Communications?
For communications tonight, we would like to thank the General Mills Foundation for a $5,000 grant. Proceeds from the grant provide financial support for our outreach initiatives, including the Intergent Care Grant, Backpack Food Program, and our family engagement activities. So, we appreciate that generous donation from General Mills. Also, congratulations to Corinne York. She is our music teacher at Hobgood. She was recently named the Tennessee Outstanding Music Educator by the Tennessee Music Education Association. It's quite the honor for her. Irma Siegel and Bradley joined Discovery School in overall Creek to become a state STEM Designated School. Of the 42 STEM schools across the state, four of those are Murfreesboro City Schools, quite the accomplishment since that is open for public, private, charter, any type of school. So, we do want to say congratulations to them. They worked hard and very happy as far as that team. Congratulations to Sandy Shealy and her nutrition team. The Chaw Bus was featured in the June edition of Eating Well Magazine. This is a national magazine. Nice to have that coverage, and I did bring a copy in case y'all haven't received it. It's June 2020. So, make sure you go out and buy it. It's on the counters now, and the last page is Food with a Purpose. So, very nice to have that national coverage and so proud of the whole nutrition team, the Chaw Bus team, which includes not only Sandy but the nutrition, transportation, all of our support services really get behind the Chaw Bus and our curriculum department is actually, it's just a program for all of Murfreesboro City Schools. Since the COVID crisis began, they have served over 80,000 meals, that was last week already, on the Chaw Bus program. So, congratulations, Sandy and your team, and she's a celebrity and will sign if you want. Well, she probably won't, but anyway. Congratulations to Justin Latimore. He received the SCORE Tennessee Educator Fellowship for the 2021 school year. Mr. Latimore is part of the Salem community, and he will be a 30 educator cohort for that SCORE SCORE program. So, we've had lots of people receive lots of acknowledgements over the last month to two months since we've met. So, also, I would just be just not doing my job if I didn't recognize the fact that Dr. Lloyd is sitting with us tonight and the fact that he has served Murfreesboro City Schools so well. And because of COVID... With the COVID, we have not been able to celebrate him and the absolute wonderful man he is and what he's given to Murfreesboro City Schools, but we will, it's going to open back up and we're going to have celebrations, but thank you for your service. You'll be missed. That said, I will also introduce Dr. Mark Gagne. Mark will not replace Dr. Lloyd, but he will be the principal at Northfield. Is that a better way of saying it? Mark, if you'll stand up, this is our new principal for Northfield, Dr. Mark. So, I think I've gone off script enough now, and that is my communication, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. I will, at the same time, we're recognizing, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jimmy Richardson, who is in the back, who will be taking Mr. David LaRoche's spot on our city school board because David decided he had other things he needed to get done, and Jimmy is, will be on the ballot and is a guaranteed seat. So, Jimmy, we're glad to have you with us tonight and... All right.
And that's my communications. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consent items. We have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, if we go down now to action items. Approval of the Family Resource Center Advisory Council? Ah, there comes Mr. Lyles. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Before you is the list of individuals we are recommending serve on the advisory council for our Family Resource Center. You have the board liaison, Ms. Moore, along with representatives of the principals, parents, and some central office staff. This is an annual approval we're asking for.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to approve the Family Resource Center Advisory Council?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What exactly does this council do? What are, what's the main...
They serve in an advisory capacity to our outreach team. We meet twice a year and review plans that we have for the year and then give a update on those plans. It's strictly an advisory capacity.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion's made to approve the advisory council. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Budget amendments. Mr. Anderson, I'm assuming that is you.
Sir, good evening, Board. This is our housekeeping time of year for our budget, and the first one, I'm not sure what the sequence is that you have it, but I had the general purpose budget amendments. The first line in those are always the cash amount that's in our fund balance, and then anything underneath that is where we adjusted to fit with what actually happened during the year versus the estimated budget that we put together back last spring. Like I said, this is housekeeping. These are things we have to do because under the state law, we cannot spend more than what is in the budget that is approved. So, we're asking for approval of the, and we're going to have to do each one of these separately, approval of the budget amendments for the general purpose budget. I'll be glad to answer any questions about that one if you have any.
Now, do we, I'm sorry.
Ms. Barton?
Do we, did we get a list of what the exact amendments were to each of those budgets? Or...
These, these are...
Are these ones we've already seen?
For example, and the first one shows teachers, and it went from the, I mean, the budget that we did to the amended budget to the difference. So, it's where, for example, that we would, we added additional teachers during the year to cover the growth. So, each one has reasoning behind it, but as you know, if you have teachers, you're going to have other things that are going to fall right in line with that because of having additional teachers. You have the expenses of the mandatory fringes by the government, the insurance, et cetera.
Then, may I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Has there been any change to the reading curriculum? Are we still getting all the things that we thought we were getting initially?
Okay, this is for, this is for things in the current operating year. We haven't, we haven't gone...
Okay. Just amendments to this year. Gotcha, I'm good.
This is just on this year that we're currently in right now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Moore?
Could you say just a bit about the cash coming from the fund balance, the purpose of that, and what that means going forward?
Yes, it means anytime that we go over a budgeted amount that's shown here, we have to use a fund balance monies to pay for it. And so, we use our fund balance, which is our reserve account, like our, like our savings account, and we use that to pay for it. So, we show it here. And of course, then, we estimate how much beginning of the year fund balance we're going to have, and then how much we have at the end of the year. So, we pay for it out of that.
Mr. Ballard?
Okay, if I'm reading this correctly, Ms. Anderson, all of these are increases?
No, these are, these are increases on what we originally budgeted, and the reason we have to, the state law says that we have to have in the budget that you approve, we cannot exceed that amount, and that's why we bring the budget amendments so that you can approve these, so we stay within the state law guidelines.
So, when we, when we move to the far right column, and it's, that's the amended amount that we're, in other words, are we changing the bottom line of the 2019-2020 budget?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's why they're, that's why there's amendments. The first line shows how much is in each category. For regular instruction, which is all of our, in the classroom instruction of regular ed, that's how much we changed, and then you can see all the categories below that that fit that.
So, did I miss a grand total on this, or is that just not...
Not on there.
It's not on this page.
On, on the regu, it's, it's done by category because we have to approve each one by category. So, the first one is, is 797,582 dollars, 797,582, and then special ed, special ed is 116,162, and then it goes through each one that way. Where it hits as a grand total is when we do our fund balance amount.
I guess what I'm worried about is I might approve something that I don't really know where, are, are we in the good?
Describe what you mean by in the good.
In other words, are we taking from stealing from one line item to pay and put it into another bucket, one bucket to another bucket, and are we going to still have, are our buckets going to be okay as we wash this out? In other words, we're not going to be, you gave us a list before, and I was looking for it, but it, we were like on the reserve requirement, we're supposed to be 3% or...
Yes.
650,000 or so?
Right.
Okay, how does that affect, affect this?
That is part of it, and that is in your, we gave you the fund balance analysis, and that shows that, that's where that $600,000 comes in, that we have to get that 600,000 to make sure it passes muster with the state of Tennessee. The budget is balanced as we have it. What's not balanced is fitting all the state requirements. Right now, before the legislature, is consideration of, of adapting or adjusting the fund balance requirement because every school district is struggling for cash right now. So, we're all that, but even, even after this, we still show ending fund balances over $5 million. So, it's not that we're, we don't take it from one account and give it to another, it goes out of the fund balance account to cover it.
Okay.
And this is, this is a process that we go through every year, am I right?
Yes, sir, every year.
Every year, because I know the budget, we present a certain budget, but we have to be flexible enough to say things are going to change, and then we come back with the amendments. I think I remember this from my first year and second year and whatever year I'm in now, that, so we come back and we look at it again, and you come back so pleasingly and say, you know, not that I need more money, but we're taking it from the fund balance, but that's what it's for, correct?
That's what a fund balance is there for, is a reserve account to make sure you can pay all your bills as you're going along. Unfortunately, we've had, you know, we started with over $7 million, and we're going to, we're going to use almost $2 million of this to cover this amount.
And we'll still be in the good, because I know, we don't want to talk about it, but I know that we're going to be looking at some pretty belt tightening stuff come next year with revenues being down statewide, citywide, and even in my house.
Our concern is sales tax. BEP money is going to stay, they said it's going to be the same. Property tax money is pretty much a fixed amount because people are going to, either going to pay their property tax, or it'll fall into an account that will get it later. But the sales tax is the questionable one that we have. So, that's, that's always a concern to us, and we follow that like crazy.
Yeah.
Track it. Overall, as I mentioned to you, I think at the last meeting, we're going to be fine this year to finish up, you know, paying our bills and everything like that. We also have $1.2 million allocated to our district, but we do not have direction from the state yet how we can spend it. That's going to take care of the $600,000, in our opinion, if they allow us to funnel it the way we want to funnel it. And we also have money coming to us from FEMA for anything we did for the, for the COVID-19 to make sure that all the, everyone was safe. So, we have two other, two other things. That's why I'm not as worried standing in front of you, that I know I got 1.2 million plus something else coming to cover our differences. Okay. I feel very comfortable with that.
Is the 1.2 million from the CARES Act, is that what it is? And then the FEMA's separate?
Yes, it's the CARES Act money. Just that the state nor the feds have given us explicit directions on how we can handle that, how we can do that, what we can spend it on exactly. We know, we know what the purpose is, it's just how's it going to work its way through the budgets?
Other question? Now, we, we need to approve each category...
No, sir, just, just the general purpose, the overall general purpose budget amendment.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Settles, we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. The next one I have is school nutrition. The school nutrition budget spent $229,000 more. What that is, is we moved farm to school into the school nutrition budget, so that money does come back to us through the farm to school grant. And also, we paid for our equipment out of the school nutrition line since they, they, once they get over three, three months of their expenditures, the state requires us to spend that money. In other words, they don't want us to build up a big fund balance. So, what we did is we put their maintenance, things like fixing an oven, et cetera, we put that into the school nutrition one. So, it, it shows up here, and it's $229,000 total, but that's the, that's the major differences in those, is the farm to school and the repairs and maintenance on the equipment.
Have a motion to approve the school nutrition?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Next one I have is the Extended School Program Budget Amendments. It's only $22,830, and what that amounts to is basically field trips, credit card processing fees, and miscellaneous expenses. So, that one's relatively small for the overall amount of, it's only $22,830 difference from what we had.
Have a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Barton. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
All right, the next item is the federal budget amendments for 1920, and as you know, that doesn't really start until October, so a lot of this is guesstimate work on what we do, because we have carryover funds that come into play, we have other expenditures that come into play, and the state gives us a window to work with of, it's 27 months. So, you get one year, you get a carryover, then you get three more months. So, in this one, we, we had additional expenditures of $406,000, which we got, we got the money for it through federal funding, but we have to show that we didn't exceed it. We broke down that for you in the, in the subsequent pages to that, which shows how much we had originally budgeted, and then how much we ended up spending in our federal, our federal funds budgets. So, we have, asking for the same thing for approval of this one to meet the state standards.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
All right, the next item we have is the School Debt Service Fund. That is a, a new one for you. This is one that's produced by the city for their records. The only line item that really hits us in our budget, and it is in your budget already, but they said they wanted us to approve it, is if you go from line item, it's number, number three, from city schools, the budget is 409,200. It dropped a little bit this year. That is in your budget already, but the city wants it approved for their records to go into their budget. All the other things are just activities that go on that they have to show. So, this document, really, the only line item that really fits us is the 409,200. As I said, you've already approved, it's already in your budget. We just need to approve it for the city so they can make all their records fit what ours do.
Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
All right, the next item we have is the Federal Budget 421. This one has to be approved now to get it in the budget, and when we do approve this, we ask that you approve it and that the, when you decide on a director of schools finally, that they can move it around to fit what they need once we find out the total amounts. We know, we have an estimate of how much we're going to get from the, from the feds and state, and we know we're going to get some carryover money, but that number's not been calculated as yet. And so, what we have here is our estimate of federal budget 421, and as I said, it'll, it'll change some. You can see on the second page, it shows how much is for Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, et cetera, and each one of our, each one of our grants, and IDEA as well, our special ed grants. So, this is one, it's just an approval from you to move forward, to basically take the money from the federal government, be able to apply it to budget codes, and that's what we've done in this one. We don't know how much of the carryover monies we're going to have, but like I said, we have a window of 27 months to process that.
Ms. Moore?
Mr. Anderson, could you say just a bit about how this relates to the budget that we were working on a month ago?
Yes. The budget that you approved last, last month was your general purpose budget, your food service, and your, and your extended school program. You did not approve a federal budget. This is extra money. We cannot, what they use as the term is supplant, meaning we cannot use money out of this to, to supplant what we're doing in our regular budget. So, we have to, it has to be for something different. In other words, if we're going to hire one teacher for every school for something, we can't use the title schools get it paid out of this. It would have to be in addition, it'd have to get one plus. So, that's how it applies. This is extra on top of what the general purpose budget is.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Barton?
So, and it may be different now, but in, it may be different now, but in the past, we did have teachers that were designated, that were paid out of title. Does that mean that we were still paying a percentage of their salary and title was paying the remainder, or at that time, was title paying all of it?
If you go to the, to the federal 21 budget projection expenditures, you'll see salaries in Title I is 832,000. That pays for the whole teacher, it might pay for an EA in a school, and it might be a split of an administrative person of salaries, some part general purpose, some part into federal or, or in their title funds. So, it's kind of moved a little bit, but for the vast majority, it's full teacher positions.
Other questions?
This is kind of different, but since we've had all these withdrawals from the fund balance, how, do we still have our 3% in there?
No, and that's why we need that, that's, that 600,000, we're short on it right now, and that's where I'm hoping that 1.2 million will more than cover that.
Okay.
Soon as we get directions from the state.
Other questions? Ms. Moore?
I assume other districts are also facing the same challenge with the fund balance right now? This isn't unique to us?
Yes, when this first, when the, when the COVID-19 first hit, Dr. Gilbert went to the state, and I said, I asked her to please ask the state to look at fund balance amounts for all the districts. Rural districts are really going to be hit hard on that. And so, there is discussion about waiving the fund balance requirement because no one has the cash to do it, because we were, we paid our people, even though we had no revenues, to come in for like extended school program or for food service, except for the monies that we did use to feed the kids through the, through the bus program. So, every school has that issue, and that's where the CARES money is supposed to come in and help.
Settles? This is just a question to follow up on that, because I know we're good, but how are districts penalized when that fund balance drops below? Does it, is it come out of the BEP? I mean, what does the state do?
If you do not fit that, the state will not approve your budget, and if the state doesn't approve your budget, you revert to the previous year's budget. So, we would be whatever they said, you know, BEP was the previous year. And obviously, we're getting more money now for our growth. We grew 303 students this year. Well, I'll get to that when I do the enrollment stuff, but we, we grew that many this year, so that obviously helped us get additional revenues.
Mr. Ballard?
Back to sales tax, and we had, the state, if I'm correct, they rolled out that April was 650 million down on sales tax. Yeah, I don't know how that hit Murfreesboro as far as Murfreesboro sales tax, but the state sales tax problem will be our problem, right?
Well, we get, the only money we get from the state is through the BEP as far as our operating budget goes. It depends, Murfreesboro is fortunate in that we have a pretty vibrant community, and our sales tax for April didn't drop. So, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, for March. April, we don't know yet, we don't have that number yet. March did not drop, in fact, it went up. So, we think there was a lot of, I'll say, panic buying for people getting stuff. We think April will be down, and we're expecting that May will start to pick back up again because people are getting back out now. It's hard to get back out on...
Liquor tax is up probably, because that was essential, you know?
Those were essential places to be open. I didn't see any of them closed.
I can't comment on that.
All right, do we have a motion then to approve the federal budget report?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Settles, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda is, and, and the, to approve suspension of Board Policy 5.802, qualifications and duties of director of schools, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Taylor, please.
Yes, Board. This item is to temporarily suspend Board Policy 5.802, which describes the qualifications for the director of schools. The reason why we're presenting this to be suspended is so that the board can appoint an interim director of schools during the search for a permanent director, and the board will be able to name somebody who does not... not meet all of the qualifications listed in the policy for Director of Schools.
Let me explain, maybe just to general public a little bit, a reason that we need to have an interim Director pretty quick. There are certain documents, grants, federal programs, payroll, all of these have to be signed by the Director of Schools, cannot be signed by anyone else. So we're, we need to approve or appoint an interim Director as soon as possible. And what this policy, we're just suspending the qualifications that are in this policy for this interim Director.
And, and Mr. Chair, it might be worth noting that our qualifications are more stringent than the state standard. The state standard is that the Director has to have a bachelor's, which all of the interim candidates would have.
All right. Do I have a motion then to approve to suspend the Board Policy 5.802, qualifications and duties of the Director of Schools?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of an interim Director of Schools.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Again, as you explained for the last item, it's necessary for the Board to pre, excuse me, select an interim Director of Schools to take care of those immediate tasks that need to be handled in the district, and that can only be handled by the Director. So there are, I believe, are three candidates that have presented interest to the Board and which the Board discussed at the 5:00 work session, that can be presented as a nominee for the Boards to vote on, Board members to vote on, excuse me.
And let me emphasize, the three folks that applied, that wanted to be considered are all very quality persons.
Yep.
They do a tremendous job in our central office. And the only bad part about being the interim is, they're going to have to do two jobs, what they're currently doing, and also take up as much slack as possible in place of the Director of Schools. So it is a big challenge for whomever it may be. But now, I will now open, do you want to, do, I will now open the floor for nominations for interim Director of Schools. Ms. Barton?
Like you said, three very worthy candidates, but I'd like to nominate Ralph Ringstaff.
Okay. Do we have other recommendations? With no other recommendations, Ms. Van Cleve, will you call the roll, please?
Wes Ballard?
Aye.
Roseanne Barton?
Aye.
Becky Goff?
Aye.
David LaRoche?
Aye.
Amanda Moore?
Aye.
David Settles?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Our new interim Director of Schools will be Mr. Ralph Ringstaff.
Ralph, we all look forward to working with you. And we have got some, as you well know, and I think anybody else in education knows today, that we have some huge, big decisions to make, and some big things coming up, and hoping that we're going to be able to open school in August. And one of the first things I guess is going to be whether or not the government's going to allow us to open. But I am sure that you, along with other staff members of the Murfreesboro City School System, will work diligently to get things going. And you have some comments, and I'll be glad to let you talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Board Members, for your vote of confidence. It's very bittersweet that I accept this position. Our team, starting with the teachers, support, services staff, school administrators, central office, and with your support, and of course, with Linda Gilbert watching over us, we will continue to move the district forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the method by which this Board will use to select a permanent Director of Schools. Ms. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As we discussed at the 5:00 work session, there are three methods that the Board can choose when looking for and recruiting a new permanent Director of Schools. And this is outlined in Policy 5.801. The first method is for the City School Board to conduct its own search and recruitment efforts. And they would, the Board would develop its criteria, and set a timeline, and set the process for how it would recruit candidates. The second option would be to use the service provided by the Tennessee School Board Association, where they would consult with the Board, determine the Board's needs for a superintendent, advertise the position, vet out the candidates, and present a report on the candidates to the Board for the Board's selection. And the final process would be for the Board to do a request for proposal, and consider getting a private firm to conduct the search on behalf of the Board, and go through the same vetting process that the Board or TSBA would go through to find candidates and present them to the Board for their vote for the permanent Director.
Thank you, ma'am. Floor is now open for any discussion or recommendations. I'll go with Ms. Goff first.
I have a, a question for Mr. Anderson. When we are considering which consultant group we might use, do we have the funds available? I'm sorry. Do we have the funds available, since money is an issue?
There is no, obviously, we did not anticipate this, so that's not in the budget at this time. It would end up coming out of the, out of the Board's fund balance. Since there hasn't been much traveling for this, for this year by the Board, there's, there's some money still in that line. So really, it would depend on which route you take as to what we could do. But we would still have to do a fund, have to do a, a budget amendment to do that.
You have been through this process in your position in Williamson County. Did you go through the process with TSBA, or what did, what did your Board do?
In my 30 years as a Board Member, we've done all of them. We have gone through the outside search firms. We've gone through TSBA. And most recently, the Board chose no firm because the Board was familiar with the candidate that they wanted, and we just voted for the person we had. So we had no additional expenditures on that.
Okay.
But we've been through all three.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
But Settles, you have a question?
I had a recommendation.
Okay.
I recommend TSBA. If I need to put it in the form of a motion, I will. After reading and considering, and with the need to move very expeditiously with everything, the challenges that we have, I think, considering a consultant firm, we have to search through who we want to go through and all of that stuff. TSBA, we know, we're members of TSBA. I think that we can lay out our criteria with them. So I recommend that the Board go with TSBA for our consulting, and with the Plan A, or Plan One or Two to be chosen at a later date. So if that's in the form of a motion, I move for that.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion made. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Now, we have other discussion?
My only comment having to do with the TSBA is I know one of the employees of the TSBA had expressed some interest in the interim position briefly.
With this?
Wasn't that the fourth person?
No.
Oh, okay. Never mind then. I wanted to make sure the DSBA wasn't, we weren't going to hire the TSBA to recommend one of their own employees to be our...
I'm not even sure that...
I had not heard that.
Well, I think you got, sorry, I didn't...
I think I got Tammy's confused.
Tammy Garrett with Tammy.
Okay, okay. Oh, okay. All right. I got you. Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Barton?
I would just add to what David said, that we, we discussed this briefly in the, the work session, but TSBA is going to have access, of course, to Tennessee teachers. And what I like about that, or administrators, is that, that's what, that's the set of guidelines we work under. So I would really like to get somebody from Tennessee that has been doing the same thing we've been doing, dealing with the same issues, the same restrictions. And they also have great access. I mean, if you could hear all the places that they're going to send this, Elizabeth shared with us all the places they'll send the notification that that's what we're looking for. They are still sending it to, I think it was Southern Regional. So we still have the opportunity, even then, to, to look into states surrounding Tennessee. But I think for what we pay, I think that's going to be just as effective as paying an outside firm $30,000 or more. So...
Okay. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. And we will contact TSBA in the very near future. I will assume that we, and I'm looking at the calendar, we'll just have to see what they tell us, and see if we can not meet with them on our June 9th, if possible.
Is that a public site? I mean, do we do that on television? The consultation?
I think the consultation.
The consultation?
Mr. Anderson? Yeah.
Or at least...
I didn't know. Maybe not on TV. That's what I meant.
Yeah.
It's an open meeting.
Right.
It's open criteria.
I get that, but is, does that have to be?
Can it be a work session, in other words, offsite? I mean, uh...
The meeting just has to, we just have to provide adequate public notice, and it has to be open to the public.
Okay.
It doesn't necessarily...
I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I'm just asking.
And I guess my...
We'll, we'll contact them and see what they tell us. How about that? And we'll go from there. Dave?
No, I was just going to say, does it, does it have to fall on a regularly scheduled board meeting, or can it be a, a different meeting of sorts? But, you know, you set the agenda.
At any time, if you want to do it quicker than June 9th, it's fine with me. You want us to contact TSBA and see what they tell us?
I'm, I'm with that.
Okay. Let's, we'll do that.
I mean, the sooner the better. I think that...
I think so. Okay.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Can Ms. Taylor, just for sort of public knowledge, cover the restrictions that we have under the statute for the dates when we can enter a contract?
Sure. Under Tennessee Code Annotated, there are some blackout dates, which any school board cannot enter into a contract for a Director of Schools. And that's the period extending 45 days before the general school board election and 30 days after. So with us falling right before a general election on August 6, between June 22, 2020, and September 5, 2020, we are unable to enter into a contract with a new Director. So it would either have to be before September, excuse me, June 22, or after September 5.
Now, that means do a contract. That doesn't mean start the search, the search, or discussion, or interviews, or anything. That just means you can't offer a contract during that time period. Am I right?
Right. We can go through the recruitment process. We just cannot sign a contract.
Mr. Settles?
That's what I was going to ask, because I want to be very specific. We can get down to the wire. We just can't sign the paper.
You cannot enter into a contract. So you cannot execute it and sign it in...
But you can discuss.
But can I say, you know, Butch, we want you. And he knows he's going to get the job, but we can't sign it until after September.
That is correct.
Is that right?
The plain language of the statute says enter into a contract.
You're answering like a lawyer.
That's good. So we cannot enter into a contract. We cannot sign a contract during those blackout dates.
But I can give one of those.
Kind of like you used to tell your mother, it's easier to get forgiveness.
Not in matters of the law.
So...
Ms. Goff?
So is that provision so that a new Director does not overstep their boundaries during a transition opening school year time?
I would probably say it's that if a new Board, I know in our situation, we're gaining one new Board Member, but let's say three or four Board Members were going to be coming in new, I think it would be important to have their input on the selection process because they're the Board that will be serving with that new Director of Schools. So I think it's to ensure that any incoming Board Members will have input on the process.
And also probably to keep it from being overly politicized.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on, on recruiting a permanent Director?
I have a question about our interim. When do we determine the additional salary or pay increase for this person?
For the new Director or?
For a new interim.
It's a negotiated item.
Yeah. So now that we've identified who it is, probably just like we do with the Director of Schools, the Chair, myself, and Mr. Ringstaff will meet and iron out the terms of the interim Director contract.
Okay. Report, I'm sorry.
And that would be presented back to the Board as well.
Okay.
Okay. Reports and information? We did vote on that using TSBA.
We did.
That's what we did. Okay. Reports and information. Ms. Anderson?
Yes. The first one is your enrollment report. The state determined that the end of the sixth period was going to be the number they've closed the year with. So when they calculated growth, they, they used the sixth and seventh, so they just doubled the sixth and used it as the seventh as well. So in other words, where we were at the end of the sixth is where we show up on the state records as the end of the ninth. We had 96% attendance before COVID. We had a 19.87 pupil teacher ratio. When you look at all grades added together, we grew 303 students during the year. So we had a, a very good growth year. It actually let us hold, hold our percentage of, as you know, where our revenues are split with the county school system based on average daily attendance. And because our number actually grew a little bit more percentage-wise in the counties, we were able to hold ours and grow like a tenth of a point, or less than a tenth of a point. But it let us hold it, so we didn't have to give any money back to the county for them prepaying us. So that worked out really well. So I'm glad that we grew that much percentage-wise. It left us in a good position to start for next year. If anyone had any questions on that one. Same thing you saw in the sixth. So this is the ninth inning, and sixth inning you were ahead, ninth inning you...
Very familiar.
You won the game.
You want to go into revenue and expenditure?
Yes. Revenue expenditures, this is through the end of April, through April 30. We have a $7.7 million in, in cash, available cash at this point. As you know, we go through those cycles. We drop down and go negative for quite a while, and then we come out. Usually it's in February or March, and so we're, we're out of that now. We are tracking the, the revenue side. Property taxes were up over $1 million over what we projected. We didn't know how the increases were going to end up helping us, so that helped quite a bit. So that's another reason we feel, we're feeling pretty decent about if, if sales tax dropped, we still have a little bit there to work with. So overall, we feel okay on that. Budgetarily, of course, our biggest line item is always regular instruction. And, and that one is, we're, we're in line where we should be. We don't know how everything's going to play out, like I mentioned earlier on the CARES Act, so we, we feel pretty comfortable. We're going to be okay.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else we need to come before our Board tonight? Again, I want, I want to say, well, I think we all can give certainly strong accolades. Remember Dr. Gilbert, but I think she was an extraordinary Director. And I must say that this Board and Dr. Gilbert, I thought, got along very well, and everybody worked very well together. I also will say that this, this Board is very conscientious. They're very concerned about the total school system, the staff, and the students as well. And I, it's, to me, it's just very evident that this, this seven-member Board right now is an excellent team. And we work well together, and we're not, we don't hesitate to tell each other what we think. But that's okay. That's the way it is.
Did you look at me then for some reason?
Well, I did not. I wasn't, I was not referring to you.
Kind of looked that way.
What was it my mother-in-law used to say? The fox is the finder of the scent left behind her. If you give your dog, then that's the way it is. But I didn't say that. But I do think we work, we work well together. And I would certainly, the comments that I have gotten in the last week, and I'm sure other Board Members have too, from people in the community, knowing that we have some tough decisions... in the community, knowing that we have some tough decisions to make and knowing that we're going to miss Linda's leadership and her expertise, but at the same time, everybody that has sent me an email or contacted me has been very complimentary toward the Board and the Murfreesboro City School System and staff. And I think that is something to be well thought of. And I, I can say from being a Board member, I appreciate everybody and the work that everybody does together. It's, it's a wonderful group to be a part of. Anything else?
I'll second that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ballard. Mr. Settles?
I'll second it. I'll go a little bit further because you said that, you told Ralph that you look forward to working with him, but I will say that we look forward to working him. But really, we do, we are so appreciative, and one of the hardest things that we had to do tonight, I think, was to make a decision between three excellent candidates for interim school director. That was one of the hardest things that I've had to do as a school board member in my four years. Really, really hard. But I think that we have a good team. We have an excellent team, and I think we're just looking to go forward. The presence of Dr. Gilbert will definitely be missed. It has been a, a big adjustment for me because I thought she was an exemplary leader. She brought pride to our system. She, she was a good advocate for our system, and she always looked out for the, the underdogs, and I really appreciated that about her. So her legacy lives on, and I appreciate having been able to serve under her for the years that we did, and we look forward to carrying the legacy forward. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I will say what I said in our work session, that I think that Dr. Gilbert is smiling down on you three guys that stepped up to the plate to, to help us fill in the gap during this very unforeseen tragedy, is what I see it as, and that you all are experts in your field, and we, we want to get behind whoever can help us have a seamless transition into this new school year. And I really appreciate all three of you lending yourself to us. If we didn't have you, we'd be out having to search somebody to step up and, and carry on this big job. So I'm very thankful for the job that you all do and will continue to help us do, and we want to get behind Ralph and help him to carry us forward until we find a new director.
Any other comments? But Jack?
Just want to make a couple of comments. Linda, I've known her ever since childhood, and she had a tremendous impact upon so many aspects of our community, not just education, but served on several boards with her, and her heart and compassion, her professionalism, her dedication. Just thought I'd say something to show that she taught us all something. It's all about the children. Every one of us make decisions, and will continue to make decisions, that are going to be tough in the next few months. But if we'll remember what she taught us, not only in what we do, but how we go about doing it. I was so encouraged, I got an opportunity to meet with the administrative staff with our chairman. First, I want to compliment our chairman for the work that he did to pull this together in difficult times. But every one of the administrative staff had a tremendous, gave a great, their character, their spirit, their dedication, their passion to get through this difficult time was just remarkable to watch from the sidelines. They're, as I said, competent, caring, creative professionals. And I'm honored to be in a community that has that kind of people working for them and providing for the future of our children. And that legacy that Linda gave us will bear fruit for years to come in this community. I want to thank each of you for the effort you've made tonight to, to make some difficult decisions, but as we go forward, we'll remember what she taught us. It's all about the children.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A minute.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Settles, all in favor? Good night.